I just got filming with my pen to turn it on and off.
I just got filming with my pen to turn it on and off.
I'll now call to order the May 6, 2025 School Board Meeting of the Stanwood-Domeno School District Board of Directors. President in person, Director Schreiber, King, Murray, and Evans. Director Foster is joining us remotely. And our student rep Luke is here. And Elizabeth is excused today due to a scheduling conflict. So today we're offering two opportunities for the public to speak. Comments specific to the consent agenda will be allowed prior to the vote on those items. Citizens who have submitted a request to speak during the public comment section of the agenda will be called upon to make their comments at that time, which is near the end of the meeting. We are pleased to have with us today our Stanwood High School. And Director Foster is here in person, if you can make it. Directed by Mr. Ed Corning from the High School Music Department. And I'll ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for our national anthem.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all that you do. And thank you, Shubham, Kevin, and Mel. It's always great to see our kids up here. All right. You have the agenda before you for the May 6, 2025 Regular School Board Meeting. I would like to strike from the superintendent's report. Item number two there, the Stanwood Elementary School Report. Principal Volker can't speak right now. So she's excused today. We'll catch up on that later. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for the May 6, 2025 Regular School Board Meeting as amended? So move, correct? Director King, move.
Second.
Director Foster. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That passes unanimously. The board has had the opportunity to review the April 15, 2025 Regular Board Meeting Minutes. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the April 15, 2025 Regular Board Meeting?
So move.
Moved by Director King.
Second.
Seconded by Director Murray. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. That passes unanimously. The board has had the opportunity to review the April 17, 2025 Special Board Meeting Board Retreat Minutes. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the April 17, 2025 Special Board Meeting Board Retreat?
So move.
Moved by Director Foster. Seconded by Director Evans. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. That passes unanimously. It is time for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. We'll begin today with a presentation of donations by a student representative to the school board, Luke Hoffman. $1,535.70 from the Stanwood High School Band Booster Club to cover the band field trip transportation costs. $200 from the, from Gudrun Eby in support of the Stanwood Middle School Band. $346.60 from the Commando Island Friends of the Library to cover the transportation costs for the Elder Bay Elementary Field Trips to the library. $1,535.70 from the Stanwood High School Band Booster Club to cover the band field transportation costs. $500 in proceeds from the Jump Rope for Heart fundraiser from the American Heart Association in support of the, of Osaladi Elementary School. $813.60 from the Osaladi Booster Club to purchase art supplies for Osaladi Elementary School. Thank you, Luke. Appreciating, we appreciate the donors that, as you can see, a wide variety of donations that come across to our district in support of our student activities. So thank you for that. Next item on the agenda is our school report from Principal Mike Washington, Stanwood High School.
Good afternoon. Thank you. First off, I want to say thank you to you, Mr. Ryan, who were the superintendent for allowing me to be here. Same to you, president of the board, and also all of the directors of the board. Thank you for allowing me to be here. As when I get an opportunity to speak about Stanwood High School, I get extremely happy and proud because I work with some of the best professionals that they are and get a chance to work with the students that you saw. So I'm super, super happy with that. Okay, so basically with our, the achievement there at Stanwood High School, pretty much our, our job is to provide high-quality instruction to all students, no matter who they are, and make sure that we're providing them with data. So this year during our AAP, we had several AAP goals, but I do want to highlight a few that we are definitely focusing on. So we started the year with using standards, making sure that all of our instruction is based off of our standards. We also support and utilize staff professional developments where staff are able to share their strategies, including when we do instructional learning walks. We also did a good job of credit recovery. We'll talk about a little bit of that a little bit later with some of our students. And things that we, that are very inclusive here are our athletics and activities. And then we also went through our three-year accreditation, accreditation piece. So one thing to point out right here is something that we're doing at Stanwood High School. We're really becoming more as in having, being able to modify assessments. So students, we help students be, be better able to reach standards as well as allowing retakes as well for students to do retakes, um, retake tests so they can reach standards. At that point right now, we're at like a 91.7% at that.
So just to clarify, people who didn't meet the benchmark, 91% of them were given the opportunity to take it again to hit that benchmark?
Well, 91% of our departments are utilizing those, right?
Thank you.
Yeah. So another thing I really want to highlight here is during our first semester, we had 79% of our students, overall students were on track for graduation. 80% of those were ninth graders and research shows that when ninth graders are on track, they're more likely to graduate on time. So that's something that we're really focusing on, ninth graders. Another thing that's a highlight was 85% of our students attended school at least 80% of the time. And 92% of our students did not have a discipline referral this year. So that is very impressive with us. This right here, we really focus on instruction. We have a lot of different instructional data pieces that we look at. So earlier I mentioned about instructional learning walks. This year we've been including administrators as well as staff. We completed over 260. That number has gone up now since I presented this last week, I provided this last week. Some of the things that we look at during those instructional learning walks are greeting students at the door because relationships are really key in, you know, getting kids to school for one and two for their learning. We also focus on entry tasks, exit tickets, student talk, and some of those active learning pieces. There's some of the pieces that we really look at and focus on. This right here is the data from those learning walks. As you see that we really noticed that there's a lot of it is student talk. You know, so when you go in the classroom, this is some of the things that are really important is students learning from each other. That's what the student talk piece is. Another thing is you'll see staff checking for understanding with students. It might be a thumbs up, maybe a thumbs down, or just some other task that they ask for feedback. Then what they do is use that data to guide the instruction for the next lesson. One thing that we really, really thought about at Stanwood High School right now is this is our second year working with the University of Washington on inclusionary practices. Currently, over the last two years, we've had 16 total co-taught classrooms. And, you know, we're looking at adding a few more for next year to make that number go up as well. It, right here, it shows 108 about 204 students in special education get an opportunity to go out into net settings to get those types of instruction as well. We're really, really proud that we are a demonstration site. We posted over seven school districts this year on one agency with, including over 25 educators who come in and we take them through our, maybe a few sections of our school day so they can see what we're doing in our co-taught classrooms. Our next site visit, if you want to attend, is May 22. We start those at 7:40 in the morning. We'd be happy to, for you to come through and see what that looks like and, you know, provide you any input or feedback that you may want to ask about. So during each site visit that we get, that we have, is the people who come, they provide feedback to us. These are, these are a lot. I will not read them all. There are a couple that I want to read to focus on. It kind of talks about the outstanding staff that we have here at Stanwood High School. One of the statements says, "Thank you for the passionate teacher leaders moving forward." One of the statements states, "Thank you for the passionate teacher leaders moving forward. There, there was evidence of facilitating the longing UBL strategies in classes we observed." And that's one of the things that we focus on at UBL, is universal design for learning, so we focused on that. "Staff was amazing and the Q and A session was super beneficial. Visit was very structured and meaningful." So those are some of the, some of the feedbacks, and you see others up there that we receive, not me, but my staff will see when they can, because the staff is the one that made the work, you know, as I said, we have fantastic staff. What we've been doing this year too, we, we call it journey to graduation, where we recover over 55 credits for students, for seniors who have struggled to keep on track with their credits, so we, you know, we've implemented some strategies and structures where students are able to recover these credits throughout the year. Administrators and councils, we, we met with all of these students involved, we created learning plans for these students, and we do check-ins with the students and help them create a plan so that they can be successful, so that's going well as well. Spark time is something that we do twice a month during advisory, during this time, students are able to go back and, and work with teachers that they may have struggled on tests and need, just need some extra support, so we do this twice a month during our grad, part-time test for student support. And you see on the bottom, work on credit recovery as well. So we have, like I said earlier, we have Spark Athletics and also activities, I just want to combine these two together. We have over, over a thousand students throughout the year participate in athletics and also club activities. And a lot, many of these students are in special ed, and so this just proves the type of work that we're doing here, that we are very, very inclusive. We turn no one away, we create an opportunity for them to make it work. So one thing that was really big for Stanwood High School this year, in this, this picture right here, we, I had to do what is called a, we are accredited school, right? So every, every six years, we have to go through an accreditation process, but every third year, we have to go through a mid-check to see how that process is going. This is the picture that I started with, with that accreditation process, and it states, "Our staff pulls our students to the finish line." Like I said earlier, our staff does not stop, right? They are some of the best staff members that I've worked with, so I really wanted to display this to, to show what type of staff we have here at Stanwood High School. These right here are some of the highlights from our accreditation, but I won't read them all. However, a couple of things that really stood out was strong commitment to student support. I mean, you can come in at 6:30 in the morning, you see staff is there, ready to support kids, although they don't start until 17. You can see staff there over the weekends, making sure that they're prepared for Monday morning for students. Also, we do a lot of monthly progress monitoring during our department meetings. And also, we do a weekly, what we call radar meeting, where we meet with counselors, psychologists, the SRO, security admin, outreach para, and other people to identify students who are struggling and create opportunities to help them. Now, and I also want to say that we have done a really good job this year, I'll say I have done a better job this year of really focusing on and identifying and communicating expectations. We do this on Mondays and Fridays each week with, with students so they have clear, clear expectations that they know. And my favorite, one of my favorites is I, I do what is called this on Friday, and the kids know me for that, so. So that's basically all what we have, right, all that I have right now, but there are a lot of great things that are, that is going on at Stanwood High School, and yeah.
Thank you. Questions?
Since you mentioned the modified assessments, could you describe the difference between those and regular assessments?
So with the modified assessment, it could be like, one, one assessment assessment could be at a 10th grade level, written at a temporary, but it may be rewritten at an eighth grade level so that the student can better understand what, what is being asked of them.
And also you mentioned retakes of your assessment tests, are those the same tests repeated or different tests covered at the same time?
Most of it, most of them are, but it depends on the department, you know, some of the departments, some of the teachers may rewrite a test so to make sure that the student has not memorized what was on that particular test, right? But yeah.
Can you clarify a little data for me? So it's under the instructional strategies observed, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding those numbers correctly. So, so you have 229 responses, is that like, that's how many times you observe that and you put it into like a database? Or is that saying that they're only doing that thing 3.5% of the time?
Let me pull that back up real quick, but realistically, when we go into a classroom and we look for those particular strategies, we select that one, and it could be, it could be five times that we've seen it, it could be six times that we've seen it, right? So I want to make sure that I answered your question correctly, let me go back to it real quick.
I know, it's really far back, but I didn't mind it while you were doing it.
Oh, right, sorry.
Yeah.
So, so.
Like, I just want to understand, I, I want to make sure that I understand how, like, what this data is.
So, so let me, I'll say this right here, we'll say student talk. So if you look at that, there was 144 checked student talk once we, out of the 200 and whatever visits that we went into a classroom, that particular section was clicked 144 times saying that this is what we've seen.
So you're looking for all of these things and every time, and we're saying that 3.5% of the time we see this, 62% of the time we see this?
Correct. And if you notice, like, greeting students at the door, we, we do that a lot, however, it may not just be displayed up here because when we go into a classroom, the classes already start, so we're not able to see that.
Okay, I, like I said, I just wanted to make sure that I understood what that data was telling me.
Yeah.
Everything, thank you.
Director, I have the same question, but you know, as I walk through the classrooms with Principal Washington, we don't often, you know, it feels like we're in at the beginning more than the end, and that would, that would stand the reason why the exit tickets only marked a couple of times, right? So it's, it's kind of that random observation that is logged, but definitely appreciate the, the data gathering that's happening.
Yeah. Perfect, thank you.
I, I appreciate all the hard work you're doing, and I appreciate you being here and your enthusiasm, and lastly, your focus on the academic progress, because I think that's, that's why I ran for office, is to help you improve that. And I see that happening, for that, I'm grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Washington. I wanted to, you mentioned your outstanding staff, I agree with you, concur with that, as we saw with the young people in the jazz band choir here today. And also, I was aware, John Hillbrand, one of your teachers there, we celebrated when he was nominated for the National STEM Teacher Award, but now I understand he is one of five finalists here in Washington State.
He is.
And I think that's just tremendous that you have a great staff up there and good leadership there, and I wish you well in the national awards.
Yeah, that's, that's very impressive.
I have one question as well. So you were talking about the data around this credit recovery.
Yes.
Do you know personally how many students are having to use that?
Probably about 45 to 50 students, yeah.
Like to John Hillbrand, I saw he was the only math teacher in the five.
Yeah. He does a lot of good things in his classroom, for sure, yeah.
And that's support.
Was that?
That's support.
It is.
Just want to highlight a couple of your slides, we're on our, go-to of our strategic plan, which is around engagement with athletics activities and, and the community, so thank you for gathering that data in support of our strategic plan as well. Thank you, Principal Washington, for continuing to lead.
Just one other thing, that radar, you mentioned radar thing, at 7:30 in the morning?
It says 7:30.
Radar meeting.
Mm-hmm.
For that, Chris?
So basically what we do is we identify students who are struggling, right? And, you know, the counselors, when we come in, we discuss those students, and then we figure out next step for those students, whether that's creating a safety plan, or working on some type of interventions, or meeting with the families and try to maybe see what other classes may be appropriate for that student. You know, just to get to know the student and even at a level to help them.
Would I be welcome on, and would it be comfortable for me to come and learn then?
I will defer that question to the superintendent.
You know, because it's still to learn.
I'll say this, it's fine with me, but I'll defer that question to the superintendent, I guess.
I mean, it's just because it is due, the process is what I'd like to learn about.
From my standpoint, you're more than welcome to come at any, any time, right? And I'll be happy to share with you, I'm very transparent with what we do, and I'll be happy to share with you.
I certainly don't want to violate any rules.
Right.
We'll coordinate, especially when it's appropriate with student, student data and.
Yeah, sounds really interesting.
So, yeah.
Helpful.
Thank you, Principal Washington, once again, I appreciate how you continue to lead with an emphasis on cultures, academic achievement, and student engagement, thank you very much.
Thank you to our SRO, after that, we encourage your participation in those things.
Next up on the superintendent's report is Ruth Floyd with the March financial report.
Good afternoon. Today is the financial review of the financial report from March, and there are just a couple of things to highlight this month. It's very consistent with prior. Our annual average FTE in March enrollment was 4,663, which was 59 over budget and 27 above last year. We expect that to decrease over the next several months as is typical, as we go into spring, before summer. Manager's report is as expected, 7.6% remaining after those expenses and written conferences are taken out. And you can see our three years of, of fund balance here, we're at 6.7 million, or, I'm sorry, 5.7 million dollars. That's about 6.5% of total revenues. March is one of our lower months, but we do expect fund balance to come up as in prior years in April and May, and then it'll decrease again after those, it goes up in the spring due to the tax collections coming in for spring. This is our object summary, very consistent with what we've already discussed related to general fund. And our budget status reports for all funds, again. Let me get down, but, again, general fund 5.7 million. And then capital projects 5.5 million. And debt service fund, tax collections, ASB fund, very little change there from last month. Transportation vehicle fund, again, just a little bit of tax collections, and, and then our budget capacity report. We had a few budget, budget increases or budget transfers, but that's it. And then food service program report, you can see that it, we're actually seeing evidence of those lower than budgeted breakfast numbers in state revenues and food costs. And however, also noticed that our revenues are above this time last year. It may not look like much just because of the supply chain assistance that came in last year of 150,000, but we are exceeding last year's revenues, and that's partly due to the elementary schools that are free for all students. And you can also see in the, that the participation overall is up compared to the prior year, particularly at those elementary schools that offer free meals. And that's all I have to highlight today, and let me answer any specific questions.
So a question, changes in FTE, in my, my public college, it normally impacted the whole year, impacted the following school year's revenue. But there was one year where it was a triple impact, impacted the correct year, the next year Kansas City cap, how's it work here?
Are you talking about our enrollment FTE decreasing?
Yeah, yeah, those, those numbers.
It's a typical pattern in most school districts where you start off with, actually, September starts lower, and then it goes up in October, and then it may go, even start increasing a little bit, but then in the spring, it definitely decreases, and this is at most schools. But it doesn't really, it doesn't necessarily inform what will happen the next year, so you can't. It, it, we do what's called a roll-up, and then there may be a factor in which certain grade levels will increase even though we had a lower enrollment in the spring, it doesn't necessarily translate to a lower enrollment in, in the following fall.
So in general, it impacts the next school year's funding, is that how it works?
No. No, so we, we get our enroll, our funding is based on the current year enrollment, but it changes every month because it's based on the annual average enrollment for the current year.
So it's changed funding on a monthly basis then?
After January, so this, September through December, the first four months of the year, it's based on what we budgeted enrollment to be, which informs the, the funding for those four months. And then starting in January, they true up the actual enrollment because then they have five months of enrollment in which to take an average, and they, they restate our funding based on that five-month average. And then every month after January, they restate the, the funding again based on the new average, six months, seven months. In this case, it's seven months of enrollment average. So that goes to show that as enrollment decreases in the spring, our funding will start to decrease a little bit, but I factored that in with my projections. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ruth, we always appreciate your clear and consistent communication around the district's financial, financial health.
Have a great team.
The last item on the superintendent's agenda is a proclamation for this week in which we celebrate our teachers. It's Teacher Appreciation Week this week, and actually, today is Teacher Appreciation Day. And so to recognize the incredible work of our educators who serve our students each day, we are going to read a proclamation here in just a moment. And we'd like to make that known and to acknowledge the hard work and dedication and heart our teachers bring to the classroom each and every day. So with that, whereas the success of our children and communities is significantly influenced by the exemplary teachers throughout the Stanwood Comino School District, and whereas the knowledge, support, and skills our teachers provide, students will positively impact generation for years to come, and whereas Stanwood Comino School District teachers challenge students to achieve academic success, and teachers lay a foundation for success in developing students' creative thinking, collaboration, and communication skills, and whereas Stanwood Comino School District teachers dedicate themselves to ensuring their students' academic, social, and emotional wellbeing, and whereas the Stanwood Comino School District teachers encourage students to achieve their goals while recognizing every student has unique strengths and needs. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Directors and Interim Superintendent of Stanwood Comino School District Number 401 do hereby recognize May 5 through May 9 as Teacher Appreciation Week and invite students, staff, families, and the Stanwood Comino School District to join in this special observance. Thank you very much, and to receive this proclamation is the Stanwood Comino Educational Association President, Nada Goldstein, and Vice President Rita Brenn. Oh, I'm sorry, Rita, I, I even wrote it down, Rita Peterson, sorry. After 20 years of working with Rita, I didn't do that.
Well, thank you all for the leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rita Peterson.
Yes. Sorry.
Coach. Do you want a picture?
Yeah.
I got Photoshop.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That'll be the end of the superintendent's report. Thank you.
I have one question on our consent agenda before we move to that. If you want to address, and I'm sure others probably had the question too, on our threat assessment there?
Sure. We have an agreement that we renew each year with the Northwest ESD to provide threat assessments when they're needed for students in the district. The threat assessment protocol is a manualized protocol through Samhain-Kaiser, it's a Samhain-Kaiser protocol, and is standard through community districts in Washington State. If we need to implement a threat assessment for a student, the Level 1 threat assessment is carried out by our team here on campus. Generally consists of the principal, counselor, Deputy McCurry, and other relevant adults, including parents and students. If there's a need to escalate the assessment to what we call Level 2, that brings in this team from Northwest ESD that helps to organize community partners, which might include Child Protective Services, DCYF, and other agencies that can assist in providing students and families the resources they need to reduce the threat that the student may have or be exhibiting. So this is a renewal of that contract for the 25, 26 school year.
Thank you for doing everything you can for our kids' sake. All right, thank you, Ms. Rubenell. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. Anyone in attendance may speak to the items contained in the consent agenda and only those items contained in the consent agenda at this time. This is not a portion of the meeting for open public comment on items outside of the consent agenda. Open public comment is coming up soon. Are there any board directors who wish to pull any item from the consent agenda for discussion? Are there any people in attendance who wish to speak to any of these consent agenda items? You got one online? All right. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items 1 through 12? By Director Evans?
Same.
Second, by Director King. All those in favor of consent agenda items 1 through 12, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That passes unanimously. We have no old business to discuss today. Do we have any public comment? Okay, no public comment. All right, new business topics scheduled for school board discussion. We have nothing there. Student representative reports, Ruth.
On the week of April 21st to the 25th, the Lincoln Hill ASB group organized a spirit week for students to participate in dressing up for themed days. Some popular days were colors flash, promoting students to dress in certain colors depending on their answers to questions posed in the conference of the school, and Adam's Island Day. The last day, Friday, was the night of the Lincoln Hill Spring Social, an event running from 6:30 to 8:00 that invites all Lincoln students to get together and dance or enjoy the backyard barbecue food provided by the Lincoln Hill Booster Club. A week later, on Wednesday, 30th, all Lincoln seniors partook a meeting discussing the upcoming ceremony for the Lincoln graduation on June 10th, marking the end of the year for seniors, explaining the procedures and having students nominate themselves or others for responsibilities of leading the flag salute or being a keynote speaker. Additionally, seniors will have the opportunities to visit their elementary schools during the Roots to Wings Ceremony on June 6th, and are invited to attend a field trip on the 13th to the Museum of Popular Culture in Seattle. Transport and food will be provided by the Booster Club. Students who are working hard to get their work finished up in this final push. Seniors already have their high school beyond plan turned in, and SBA testing is beginning on Monday of the next week. We look forward to seeing them succeed.
I do.
Thanks, Luke.
All right, well now we want items brought up by board directors, but last time we said everything that you were going to say, so I said I would let you go first today.
Thank you. Good report, Luke. I get excited when you start to talk about the things you mentioned because it means we're getting close to graduation, so thanks for highlighting that for both high schools. Appreciate it. I will go ahead and take the liberty to thank Eric Ronnie and his students in the choir for coming today. I just really believe that it helps us to keep students at the center of what we're here for and having the choir do that, I think displayed that today. The last thing I want to talk about is that we received notice late last week that our elementary schools have received some awards and we're proud to share that Cedar Home Elementary, Eljubay Elementary, Port Susan Middle School, Twin City Elementary have been recognized by the Washington State Recognition Program for the 23, 24 school year. And I'm going to add Stanwyck Elementary to that list who actually received that recognition back in November. And these honors place our schools among the top 16% across Washington and highlight exceptional student growth and success such as boosting academic growth, closing opportunity gaps, and achieving high performance across several metrics. And those metrics that we want to talk about are for Cedar Home Elementary, Eljubay Elementary, and Port Susan Middle School, they were recognized for growth based on significant academic progress by students in one or more racial or ethnic groups. And Twin City Elementary, as well as Stanwyck Elementary, earned recognition for growth in English learner progress, celebrating outstanding gains made by multilingual students. So this is a reflection of the hard work from our staff and the families to make these gains. And I just think it's important to highlight that as our students make gains. There'll be banners that go up in each of the schools and we'll have those up later this spring, so thank you.
Thank you. Talking about our outstanding staff again. I had the pleasure of going to Stanford Middle School to recognize the certified employee of the month and the classified employee of the month last week. Director King?
Well, I went to another of the presentations by Superintendent, interim Superintendent Ryan at another location on Camila Island. And we're good again. Also, Academic Advisory Committee is doing well with the accomplished amount. And, well, there's something coming up that is starting this Thursday and that's a book study review sort of of a book called The Anxious Generation about the extremely severe impact of smartphones on kids. And the subtitle is something about causing an epidemic of mental illness, including ZADIC and depression. That's important. So we're going to be doing this. We have a bunch of books. And I think that's going to be a very... We can come up with a really good policy and procedure to help with this. And in fact, I was just talking with a close friend of mine in Los Angeles who's the only Los Angeles school district, they already have a really, really, really strong policy there for the whole Los Angeles district. So we're looking forward to our making really good progress on that significant issue.
Thank you, Director Foster.
Thank you. My microphone's not working, I'll speak up. I did go to the Budget Committee and that was enlightening and learned where our funds are going and how they're distributed. I intend on continuing to go to those. My intention is also to go to the next Academic Excellence Committee and be a part of that. And because I want, my goal and my dream is that Stanwyck becomes the place where everybody else wants to go to school because this is a place where we learn and have fun and we overachieve any others' expectations. I'm looking forward to a great and productive new year and appreciate everybody being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Foster. Director Irvin?
I also got to join Director Schreiber in... I'm getting to present the awards at Stanwyck Middle School for classified and certificate stuff. And I got to join Director Stephen King at the community state at the school presentation as well as spending some time with Director Hoster at our Budget Committee meeting. So yes, it's been a busy couple of weeks. I'm looking forward to the best study. Unfortunately, I'm not able to make the first couple, but I'm looking forward to hearing how our community engages in this conversation because it is something that's very important for the health of our students. I'm looking forward to rocking the era here soon and all the fun events and festivities.
Thank you, Director Irvin.
You know, it's the end of the year, right? It's when all of the things come together and it feels like there's 72 things every day to pick from to go through. The plant sale, I think, was a big success. We've got a ton of students that are getting ready to go to state in a bunch of variety of things between FFA and track and TSA and all of the things. I want to say congratulations. We looked at our personnel report, a lot of resignations for some of our really great staff that have been promoted outside of our district. I think it says something about our structures and our programs here that so many of our staff are being promoted outside of the district into really great opportunities. A little sad that they're leaving because we really like having them here. On that note, we've got a lot of transition and staffing changes coming our way next year, so bear with us, be patient, continue to support your schools and your staff the best you can because change is hard and when you have that much change all at once, it's a little bit overwhelming. So I appreciate everybody who is still here. Congratulations to everybody who got those promotions and grace and patience is what I ask for from our community.
Thank you, Director Irvin. And Luke, if you have any last comments, I'll give you the last word today.
I got nothing.
Well, thank you. We appreciate you being here. All right, the board will now move into an executive session to review the performance of a district employee until 2:45 and then you'll convene at that time. And a reminder, the finalist for Principal of Little Cities is coming up, open to the public, to the staff and students, those that would like to attend then. You're getting something, but it's all our...
Is this ground for our AI study session?
AI study session.
Yes, following our executive session at 3 o'clock, we will have a special meeting here to talk about artificial intelligence. All right, and with that, we are in executive session. All right, and with that, we are in executive session.
We're going?
Yeah.
We're heading to the conference.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That concludes the executive session portion of today's meeting. We will adjourn and then we will have our study session here at 3 o'clock on AI. So we are hereby adjourned.